Can everyone?
Okay, ask the question. New York. Okay.
Julia, do you have any thoughts? Very good, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to open up our budgetary for fiscal year 2025. The committees of Community Board Eight met and came up with a list of their capital and expense budget priorities and submitted them at the end of April to the office in, sorry, and the district manager and the outgoing board chair and myself took a look at them. We discussed them with the executive committee. We had another review of them in September. And then again, last week, we had exec. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the process according to the city charter. Under the charter, community boards are given a broad range of responsibilities. I'm sorry, I'm David Kelvin, and I chair the project committee for Community Board Eight. So under the city charter, community boards are given a broad range of responsibilities for advising the city local budget needs and priorities. The charter mandates that the community boards consult with agencies on the capital and expense budget needs of the district, public hearings, prepare capital and expense budget priorities for the next fiscal year. This will be FY '25, and comment on the funding choices presented in the preliminary budget. The city's budgets, the budget could begin July 1st and is on the following June 30th of 2025. The total budget consists of three components. First comes the revenue budget, which is the city's, which is the city's best estimate how much money will be available during the fiscal year to support operating expenditures and capital improvement projects. These include all tax and non-tax funds expected to be received during the fiscal year. The expense budget covers all of the city's day-to-day operations, such as salaries and supplies as well as debt service. It is supported by the state of taxes, fees, and other local revenue, as well as state and federal aid. On the other hand, the capital budget covers the cost of the city's long-term construction program, purchases of land and large equipment, reconstruction of streets, sewers, parks, and buildings are examples of capital projects. The capital budget items are financed by the sale typically are financed by the sale of municipal bonds, as well as by state and federal grants. And in this process, there's a curious element. The city defines a capital item as anything that kind of costs more than $35,000, which I always found a little curious because I don't think you can buy a van to shovel staff around for 35, less than $35,000. That's a different matter. So the purpose tonight is to, given that we have published the preliminary priorities for capital and expense budgets for the district, this is an opportunity for the community to come in and comment on the individual priorities. However, this is not the time to talk about something extraneous. You know, I'd like to see better trash pickup or whatever. That's for discussion during the meetings within the community board of the individual committees. So at this point, I want to open up the floor to members of the community who would like to make comments about the budget priorities. And that could be Connor and Nicola, or Brett, or you're welcome. Typically, you've got three minutes at a time. I think you could be four if you wish, but this is your opportunity to make comments on our budget priorities. Hi, yes. Is there any, okay, it looks like the only hand I see so far is Jody Cologne. Jody, you have three minutes to make comments on specific budget priorities.
Thank you. And actually, public hearings, you can comment on anything. They allow that, but I will stick to money things. I'd like to advocate for the Bruckner box that is in the expense budget for Henry Hudson Park. We've been going back and forth for almost two years now about whether DEP should fix it or parks should fix it, parks needs to open the street. The Friends of Spighton Dival has now fully assumed responsibility for stewardship of both sides of the park. And without access to water in that location, we are hauling it in one gallon jugs, a quarter of a mile, to maintain plantings that the Parks Department put in. So I would just like to keep that on the list. I think it's number 15. And I also just want to advocate with all the 15% budget cuts coming forward, anything that we can do to get additional funding to the Parks Department. They can barely maintain the cleanliness of parks with the cuts they've already suffered. 15% more is going to devastate their ability to care for it. And volunteers just can't assume that responsibility. So that's my minute and a half. Thanks, thanks, David.
Thank you, Jody. Any other hands up on Zoom? Anyone in the audience want to comment on capital or expense budget priorities for fiscal year 2025?
Evening, everybody. Sorry, Quinn's back at work. Sorry, everybody. Good evening, everybody.
We can hear you.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I work for State Senator Robert Jackson. I know you guys are asking for requests to the city for capital budget money. The State Center has a limited allocation of capital funding available in its budget for the next capital budget. So if you have a project that is deemed capital by the state over $35,000 and is in Senator Jackson's district, you can send an email to our office email, which is jackson@ny senate.gov and apply there. Please have any quotes, bids that you have received from any state, city, or state agencies to apply. Obviously, we don't guarantee promises, but we try to be fair with the allocation across the district. But if you don't apply, you don't have a chance. Again, that email is jackson@ny senate.gov. And please submit it by the end of the year. Thank you.
Don't turn it off. Like mercury vapor, lamps, turn it off forever to start it on again. There's a Henrietta Goldice, I guess, with her hand up. Did you want to make a comment about the budget priorities list?
No, actually, I have a comment to make that pertained to the previous meeting that was held by the cultural committee, but they did not have an opportunity for public comment.
That's not part of the agenda of the public hearing. You may be able, time allowing, you may be able to speak before the board meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Anyone else? They were distributed with the notice of the hearing for tonight. Well, actually, we will go through that during my report, during the recording. So any other questions or, I'm sorry, comments from the community about our budget priorities for fiscal year 2025? Twice. Three times. Do I hear a motion to close the budget here? All right, thank you. Second, yeah. Very much. So we, time is spared. Do you want to start now or? Okay, all right. So we have, we can't, we can't start the board meeting until 7:00. We've got 15 minutes to use the restroom, which is the first second door on the left. Marjorie, did you find out where the boardroom was?
Go out, make a right, go down the stairs, go through two sets of doors, and you can see it.
And leave a gingerbread for help too. I always am. I know, I'm a shooter. Sergio, are you coming? Sergio, coming? I'm a elbow, probably.
Nice to meet you, everybody.
Good. Okay, and then I'll, I will.
Thank you, couple. Okay, thank you, everybody, for being patient. My name is Julie Reyes, Chair of Community Board Eight. It is 7:00, 9:00 PM, and we will start the meeting. I'd just like to start off by advising board members to come into us remotely due to extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances. Our Kelly Buford, Julie Agones, Rabbi Bob Kaplan, and Bob Felusi. The horrific terrorist attacks this weekend have and will perpetually continue to result in many Israeli and Palestinian lives lost or experiencing the worst anyone should have to live through. I asked Rabbi Kaplan to say a few words at the beginning. He's not on yet. Hopefully, he'll be able to log on. So in the meantime, I'd just like to take a moment of silence in honor of the victims and the loved ones. If you believe in a power of prayer, now is the time. Thank you, everybody. Okay, I'm just going to go a little bit out of order, and I'm going to have a someone in Jeffrey's room to speak. He's very late where he's at, so. Senator.
Senator. Okay. Hello, everybody.
I gave you another title.
Yeah, I don't really know how to change where it says Jeffrey's iPad, so I'm not changing it. And I'm also, don't mind the angle that I'm at, that's, I don't know how to make it any better. Thank you for letting me say a few words. I am pretty far away right now, and it's actually 2:00, 2:00? No, 1:00 in the morning. I just wanted to say a few words on a couple of topics. And there's, I can't even think of what else there is to say on what happened in Israel, except that our community, I am so proud to live in a community where people can come together on such short notice in the hundreds and hundreds. I'm sure some of you were at the prayer vigil this past Sunday. And what happened, I think we all know, has been the worst, literally, the worst massacre of Jews since the Holocaust. And I remember getting a call Saturday morning from Chuck Myrdler, who was in Jerusalem at the time. I can only imagine what people were going through. But I have to say, I'm not that, I'm not that forgiving a person, but I have to say that the reaction by some groups in our country was just shocking. I mean, if you look on Twitter, some of the student organizations at some of our universities, the rally that DSA in New York City, Democratic Socialists of America participated in on Sunday, where people were actually celebrating the fact that over 1,000 people were slaughtered, including babies who were apparent, according to the reports, beheaded. I don't think any of us have ever seen anything like this in our lives. But this past weekend was Jewish holidays, Shemini Yitzchires and Simchat Torah. And most people who observe those holidays won't use their telephones or emails. And yet, by Sunday, hundreds and hundreds of people from our community came out just to be together. And the prayers were led by a number of the rabbis from our community. And many of my colleagues were there. And I was there along with Congressman Richie Torres, Councilman Eric Dinowitz, Borough President Vanessa Gibson, Bronx District Attorney Darce L. Clark. And even, even some of my colleagues from other districts, such as Assembly Members Yudell Kotappi and George Alvarez, came out to show their support and solidarity with all of us. And if nothing else, that at least, at least makes me feel good. But this, this story has a long way to go. And I think that there's going to be some very tough times ahead. I, but let me just switch and mention a couple of other things. There were competing rallies a couple of weeks ago in Riverdale regarding a possible migrant residence on 238th and Waldo Avenue. It's, it's very disappointing to know that we don't know what's going to happen with that building. It was, it's a former Manhattan College dorm. It was a dorm for over 50 years, was built as an apartment building. I've said all along, I've said all along that I believe that building should be used for permanent affordable housing. Unfortunately, at these rallies, people from outside our community, and people are allowed to come in from outside our community, but people were brought in and were, it's just divisive when you have a Curtis Sliwa, and you've heard some of the horrible language he's used at some of these other rallies regarding the migrants, why he was brought there, which basically turned this into a partisan event. And then people on the other side, well-meaning people, but a lot of them came in. They were organized by a group called Jews for Racial and Economic Justice. And they're one of the groups that at least initially was almost excusing what happened in Israel. There's no excuse for what happened in Israel. There's, there's no way to defend it. And the only decent thing people can do is to, is to condemn Hamas. But in any case, the, some of these organizations have done a tremendous disservice to our community. I hope the issue of 238th and Waldo is settled in an appropriate way, but that remains to be seen. I just wanted to mention that my office, along with my colleagues, Councilman Dinowitz, Congressman Torres, Congressman Esfaya, and State Senator Jackson were sponsoring shred days. People are calling us all the time by getting the shredding machine back. So we're doing it Sunday, October 22nd on Johnson and 235th from 10:00 to 1:00. And in front of my district office, the following Sunday, October 29th, same time. So if you have documents you need to dispose of appropriately, you know, please drop by. And the last thing I'd like to say is that I'm really proud of our community. You know, when we first heard the cricket proposal back at the beginning of the summer, again, the Congressman Torres, Councilman Dinowitz, myself, we, you know, we put out statements raising concerns, opposing it. And we basically spent the whole summer agitating against it. And we would join, or we were part of, I guess I would call it, a coalition of community groups, of parks advocates, of environmentalists, including the Van Cortlandt Park Alliance, the Bronx Council for Environmental Equality, and other organizations. And in fact, I spoke to the mayor when he came to the parade ground for the ADL's Walk Against Hate. I guess that was in August. And I told him, this thing is not happening. It's not going to get passed. It's going to have to go to the legislature. I'm not going to let it out because it has to get legislation passed, which wouldn't pass without my support. I'm not supporting it. And our other elected officials that I mentioned and in these groups really came together. And again, this is another example of our community coming together as one, working as a team, working as a coalition. And we stopped what would be, what would have been a horrible, horrible proposal that would have caused damage to Van Cortlandt Park. And if you don't believe it, look what happened in Central Park when they allowed an event to take place there after being warned that it shouldn't be done. It was, it was some kind of concert, and there was significant damage done. So we, I just want to close by saying we live in a great community, and I'm glad we can all work together and get results. So whether it's reacting to a horrible event or just working for the improvement of our community, I'm really very proud of us. And so thank you to everybody on the board and everybody else who's listening. And thank you, Julie, for allowing me to speak at the beginning.
Thank you. Thank you for staying up and joining us. Be safe.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to the agenda, and we're in aisle number two, the public gallery. We have a few speakers that signed up. Is there Mick Dahlia Vella? Mick Dahlia? We will go on to the next speaker. Sue Ellen Dodelle? Oh, Mick Dahlia, Mick Dahlia, you can be on soon. I'm going to go back to Mick Dahlia. Dahlia, if you're there. I saw a few hands in Zoom. Can some people hear?
Dahlia.
No, I'm talking about, I saw a few hands.
Yeah.
Can I see yours?
I think she's waving her hand second from the bottom.
Can you let her speak in public?
Mick Dahlia?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself.
Mick Dahlia, I just have a quick question. Were you able to, obviously, because she's speaking right now?
I'm sorry, was I able to what?
Yes, okay. Mick Dahlia, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening.
I just, you know, the speakers have three minutes.
Sure. Good evening, Chairperson Reyes and members of Community Board Eight and elected officials. My name is Mick Dahlia Vella, and I'm here to talk about the proposed cannabis dispensary at 6677 Broadway. Let me start by saying that I am vehemently opposed to a dispensary at this location. I'm not opposed to the legal sale or legal use of marijuana, but this location does not make sense. I'm baffled as to why anyone would think that a dispensary next door to a soon, to soon up-and-coming homeless shelter for 140 single men is a good idea. We have continuously heard from the board, elected officials, and experts on homeless issues that this population is vulnerable. The men suffer from mental illness and substance abuse, as well as other ailments. And are elected officials deemed prudent to allow a dispensary to sell marijuana next door? No one cares about the residents of North Riverdale. At least, that's how it feels right now. Look around at all the for-sale signs in the community. This is not a coincidence. There are an unprecedented number of homes for sale in the neighborhood due to the opening of the homeless shelter at Broadway and 262nd Street sometime in 2025. Yet you continue to disparage our neighborhood, sell marijuana across the street from a park where children play. Why not? That sounds great. Next door to vulnerable mentally ill men? Again, why not? If I sound angry, it is because I am. I am angry and I'm disappointed with my elected officials. You don't hear me or the members of my community. Why is nothing positive being zoned in North Riverdale? We have assisted living facilities, for instance, the Y, the W on the corner of 254th and Broadway. It's a mess. Just this morning, as I was waiting for the bus, at 7:30 in the morning, the police were called to break up a fight, not a rare occurrence. Along Broadway, within a few blocks, we have a migrant shelter at the Van Cortlandt Motel, a future homeless shelter, and a marijuana dispensary. It seems like the floodgates are open. What, what can go wrong? Why is North Riverdale not being protected by the elect, the people elected to protect it? I cannot accept this. After being a lifelong Democrat and voting in every election since I was eligible to vote, I feel like I have no choice but to change my party affiliation. Maybe Republican leaders will care about my voice and my community, and maybe even my vote. Some think that the residents of North Riverdale are wealthy, white, and entitled. I am none of the above. Instead, I'm an immigrant, middle-class Latina, single mother, that through grit and determination, I purchased a home in the area. Additionally, I'm a dedicated public servant that has spent the last 32 years working for the city of New York, serving my city and my community. I implore Community Board Eight and my elected officials to vote against the dispensary proposed at Broadway and 262nd. Please help us protect our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mick Dahlia. Our next speaker, Sue Ellen Dodelle? Don't tell.
Yes. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Miss, go right ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sue Ellen Dodelle, and I've lived in North Riverdale for close to 40 years. I'm also a retired New York City employee. I was employed by the city as an attorney for 44 years. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for City Council Bill Intro 1099. The bill adds just two sentences to the city's administrative code. The first sentence provides that the city must offer at least one Medigap plan to its retirees. And the second sentence provides that nothing in the legislation will interfere with the city union's ability to collectively bargain for their employee members. For more than 50 years, city retirees have been promised traditional Medicare along with a supplemental plan. And now the city wants to take that away and put us into an inferior Medicare Advantage plan. The mayor is doing this because of a Ponzi scheme. In 2014, the Municipal Labor Committee, a group of the city's largest labor unions, took money from the city's health stabilization fund and used it to pay for teacher raises. They've never paid it back. And in order to do so now, the mayor and the unions have tried to take away healthcare. healthcare from vulnerable retirees, including nine eleven survivors. If we are forced into the so-called Medicare Advantage Plan, we will lose access to our doctors, hospitals, and treatments. This literally is a matter of life and death. New York City retirees have been fighting for two years in the courts to keep our earned Medicare benefits from being stripped away. And all three cases we filed have been decided in our favor. But litigation is expensive. And retirees live on fixed incomes. We've been financing our lawsuits ourselves with small contributions. And the city keeps appealing our wins in court. Some folks are telling us to wait until the lawsuits conclude, but lawsuits can drag on for years. That is why we need Intro ten ninety-nine to protect us right now. Community Board members, are you going to stand idly by and refuse to help your fellow residents of Community Board Eight who are hurting and afraid when we lose access to our doctors while battling serious diseases? We need your help to ensure that traditional Medicare remains in place. If New York City moves ahead with this, other states and cities across the country will follow and hasten the end of Medicare, one of the greatest healthcare programs in the country. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. And again, I ask that you support Intro ten ninety-nine.
Thank you, Sue Ellen. Our next speaker, Jean Connell. Yes. Jean Connell. Are they there? No? Connell, Connell, Jean Connell. Our next speaker, Valerie Porter. Valerie, if you can unmute yourself. And Jean, if you're there, you can unmute yourself also.
Thank you very much. Um, so this is Valerie Porter. And um, these comments are made respectfully. Um, I am incensed about the um, the migrant uh, shelter on two thirty eighth and Waldo, and I was part of the protest. Um, first, before I say that, I love Riverdale. When, when I was young and I lived in Co-op City and we couldn't afford, you know, to do better because my family was lower middle class, I always wanted to live in Riverdale. And then twenty-seven years ago, I was able to move here. Um, I'm not that happy uh, right now. It's changed a lot. But what's even going to be worse is um, a migrant shelter at that location. Also, the irony of the stair group, first making us miserable with loud construction noise for two years, constructing a sixteen-story building with, you know, relatively high rents, and then having them buy the building from Manhattan College for eighteen million and then selling it to the city for migrant use, one block away from the expensive building. That is unconscionable um, for all of us. But people who are moving into that build, that new, brand-new, spanking new building should be told that you're going to have migrants a block away. And also, um, if you look at the Roosevelt Hotel at two forty uh, at Forty-Fifth and Madison and all the e-bikes that are there with the migrants, it's bad enough in this neighborhood with the people on e-bikes doing deliveries now. With migrants here and the only work they'll be able to get probably is deliver, food delivery, they're going to be zipping around all over the place and, and God knows what else during the day with no jobs. I, I am very upset about this. I've contacted everybody. Gillibrand, no answer. I contacted um, Assemblyman Dinowitz, Councilman Dinowitz. No one could tell me anything uh, other than actually Assemblyman Dinowitz had somebody to call me back and say, you know, calm down, this is not a done deal. Aside from that, Richie Torres's people told me, we have to agree to disagree. I'm not happy with that. I paid taxes and I've been, I worked for the city for forty-three years. I just retired. This is wrong. Um, I never got an iPad from the city or anybody. I never got a scooter. I never got a cellphone. Everything I did on my own. So I'm, I'm incensed and as the previous speaker said, um, I am thinking of not voting, as a lifelong Democrat, I'm sorry to say, changing my votes um, towards other people who have our real um, concern in mind. Um, anyway, I, I, I know there's a time constraint, but I, I want to thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Valerie. Our next speaker, Christopher Stephens.
Good evening. Thank you, Community Board and neighbors. Uh, my name's Chris Stephens. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Thirty-eight Seventy-five Owners Corporation. Uh, we're a hundred and five unit cooperative apartment building between Waldo Avenue and Dash Place. Adjacent uh, to our building entrance on Waldo is an unbuilt mapped street. Uh, it's a portion of West two forty-second street that until recently we shared with the owner of a single-family detached home. That property has been developed into a twenty-nine unit apartment building with a fifteen thousand uh, square foot uh, community facility to be accessed from the unbuilt mapped two forty-second street. For decades, our historic use of our half of the unbuilt street has been as landscape garden and as a loading zone for shareowners and emergency repairs. This morning, a significant portion of the unbuilt mapped two forty-second street was surfaced with asphalt by a contractor. This work was undertaken without notice to our property uh, from the developer or the DOT and without consideration of the potential community impacts. Further development of the unbuilt two forty-second street would enable additional vehicle traffic in an already difficult three-way intersection that's Waldo and Manhattan College Parkway. Vehicle parking and student drop-off at this community facility would be a hazard to our residents entering our building and to pedestrians nearby in Brussels Park. Stormwater runoff down a steep portion of that unbuilt street will be further exacerbated by new pavement. So we ask that the Community Board help facilitate better communication between stakeholders regarding the future of this unbuilt map street and to prioritize non-vehicular use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Christopher. Uh, just a last call for Jean Connell. I don't think, there's a Jean, but not a Jean. A Jean could rename himself to his full name, so we show it to you, please. And in the meantime, um, in regards to the gallery session, is there anyone here from the Bronx Board President's office? Excuse me. Is anyone here from the Bronx Board President's office? Okay, everyone, great. Okay, the next is the fiftieth precinct. We have we have a special ops lieutenant by us.
Won't you step up to the stand? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lieutenant Byas. I'm the Special Operations Lieutenant at the U.S. Fifth District. I'm here on behalf of the Command Captain Ryan, uh, Captain Pierce, who's making uh, uh, regulations. I'm going to read off our crimes for the year. They, these are crimes that we tally, uh, the most serious felony crimes. I'll go through them, uh, where we're making headway and where we are, you know, still attacking more different directions. So with murders for year twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-two, we're at four murders. Compared to two for twenty twenty-two, uh, I will say that those murders do have an assailant uh, arrested, so all those murders uh, are closed to an arrest. As far as rape goes, we're at eight rapes for twenty twenty-three. And compare that to fifteen rapes, that's a decrease of forty-six percent. For robberies, we are at uh, a hundred and twenty robberies compared to one forty-seven. That's a decrease of eighteen percent. For felony assaults, which includes shootings, anything with an object uh, used, uh, we're down three percent, one sixty-four versus one sixty-nine. Our burglaries are up slightly. That's when the assailant breaks into a home or a commercial vehicle, so to speak. Um, that's up a hundred and fourteen versus one oh four, an increase of ten burglaries. Grand larcenies are down. That includes anything from credit card debts, uh, vehicles broken into or property removed over a thousand dollars. That's down slightly, two point three percent. And our biggest issue in the file, as I'm sure most community members are aware, is the grand larceny autos. Uh, we're up thirty-one percent, two hundred and sixty-nine versus two hundred and five. Uh, I'll take any questions that anyone may have at this point. I do have to run to uh, operations.
Uh, just one. You said you know who the four murderers uh, are, or were they known to the victims?
They're closed. Uh, they're closed with arrest. Some of those investigations are still pending and the prosecutions are still pending. So I won't get into whether or not they are going to the victim or, you know, if they're specific, but they are closed to arrest at this point, which is, you know, it's important to us to solve every, uh, every type of crime.
Uh, the scooter situation. You know, there's one that's down.
Yes.
To show us that public safety or the confiscate, but we need more action. Then we could give it to that one, because they put that aside while fully knocked down. I, I work for ATR. I think our list. They're gonna get you by, they're just wanting a low.
I agree. Uh, this is an issue that was brought up at the last public safety year, at the year's file. Uh, the captain and myself attended a meeting with uh, Assemblyman Dinowitz. Um, he assured us that we did have money uh, put aside to get more cameras at different locations to tackle this type of issue. But just to put this number into perspective, in the last month alone, we confiscated over twenty homebed schoolers. Some of those have been stolen. You know, that's the people that we apprehend. Uh, you can imagine that a lot of these guys committing these types of crimes are fleeing the scene. Again, we try to be safe about who we apprehend and who we go after, but that is, that is, we're almost averaging one a day as far as apprehension goes. Just last night, my NCO Sec to Charlie, which is the uh, sector that covers Riverdale, they apprehended a stolen vehicle right at the border of Youngers. So again, assets technology becomes available to us, whether it's cameras. We have license plate readers on our vehicles now where we can track pretty much the license plates and follow these vehicles. We're making the apprehensions as they come. What's that? Yeah, like any violation that the officer has observed and they're able to catch these guys safely, we remove the scooters, we write the violations, some of this, and then we proceed from there. So every time we engage them and we make an apprehension, you know, we follow through with our efforts.
I was a bystander yesterday, a friend of mine at an incident in North Riverdale. Nothing serious, folks, it was a stabbing shooting, nothing. But I have to tell you, so often the police department doesn't get a good job. I can tell you uh, by being inside, the way my friend, uh, he was treated at the bylaw and then teledevelopment, wait for a tele caller, was just unbelievable. I figured my whole afternoon, I got killed here. All parting with forty minutes and two officers, and I purposely wrote their names down, Harry and Thompson, executed what I think it says on the side of the post, CPR, Harrison, profession, professionalism, and respect. I can tell you, um, I just wanted to say it was great to witness that and I have to do this, and they solve situations, just a landmark kind of dispute, that's all. I might bring this up to public safety, just maybe they'll show up.
We appreciate that. Uh, so Mary and Tom are one of our patrol officers, um, that are out there. Surely partake in their explaining, saying things to our public health officers.
Julia has a question?
Yes.
Can you unmute her, please?
She's waiting.
Wait.
Julia Gomez.
Hi, Julia, you have a question? She has?
She just moved.
Does anyone else have a question in the room?
So just be.
Julius. Okay, um, oh, alarm's on. Thank you so much.
One more question?
Should we, the woman next to her is trying to get on, but it needs to remind people that.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you. Just a friendly reminder to everyone on Zoom, um, at the board meeting this evening, we're not taking questions or comments from the audience. Feel free to give a call or an email to the board office and we'll be glad to service any questions that you may have. Okay, so we're going to go on to the elected officials. We'll start out with the board's members first. We'll go with Councilmember Eric Dinowitz. Eric, if you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Did you say you'd go with the board? Yes, can you hear me?
Well, you're an ex-official, so.
Do you?
We have three.
Sure, okay, so I guess you, I guess you do hear me, okay. Nice to see you too. Um, I, uh, first and foremost, um, I, I think the thing that's on my mind and I think the thing that's on many of your minds is uh, is Israel. Um, you know, we all woke up Saturday morning in horror. I, I know maybe some of you were even there. Uh, I was texting and calling a number of my friends who are still there. Uh, I, I encourage you to follow me on social media, on Twitter. I've been doing a number of statements on Twitter. Um, but we've had elected officials say wishy-washy things. Uh, if you don't follow me on social media, I want to make clear to everyone here that I unequivocally condemn the Hamas brutal attacks and kidnapping and rape and murder of children and grandpa and grandparents and teenagers um, against Israel, against citizens, against bystanders. Um, I was disgusted that the DSA held a rally in Times Square at this time, which is a tacit endorsement of that violence. And I've been during this time working with my colleagues to, to make sure that they understand the implications of supporting those rallies. Uh, and that every word they say on social media carries deep, deep weight right now for so many of us. Uh, I've also been working with a number of city agencies, like the Department of Education, to make sure that our teachers and children have the resources. Uh, I've been working with other Jewish and non-Jewish colleagues to, to make sure this happens. Uh, but we in the Jewish Caucus, uh, which I chair, have certainly been taking the lead. Um, you know, making sure our children feel and are safe and that the teachers have the tools. I've also been in contact with the CUNY Chancellor. As we know, CUNY has had a long history, unfortunately, of antisemitism. Antisemitism I've spoken loudly against, uh, and we've been in communication with CUNY to try to ensure that um, they have the, the resources and they are supporting students who are fighting for peace. Uh, like we are doing in our community, like the vigil that I attended Sunday night with so many of you, where we were sharing psalms and prayers and songs of peace. Um, we've been in touch with the State Department trying to get more New Yorkers home. I've been on the, uh, on a lot of calls. I've been on the, uh, on a lot of calls with local NYPD to make sure our schools and Jewish institutions have coverage and with citywide NYPD. And, um, you know, there's no current uh threat that they know of now, um, but that of course unfortunately can change. Last December, I, I led a delegation of council members to Israel uh on a trip. And, and one of the last places we went was Kfar Azza, kibbutz along the Gaza envelope. And you may know that name because it was held hostage recently. And that is a site where they found forty murdered babies. So, so this, this is something that's atrocious and something that my colleagues who went on the trip know all, uh, too well about. Um, just a few other things, you may know that I, I introduced legislation uh requiring there to be emergency response centers in, i- i- in the case of fires. Uh, so that folks who are victims of fires and don't have access to their permit can go and grab some clothing and need to, they can get on with their life for the next day. Uh, I met recently with CBA regarding your budget, as you know, I'm very supportive of the work that you do in your budget hearings. And I'm working, trying to work closely with them to make sure that what you vote on uh is aligned with some of the work I'm doing. Um, and I do want to mention one building is Godwin Terrace. We've got a number of reports of mismanagement, a, a number of quality of life issues, which I won't list. But, uh, what we did was we worked with an organization called West Bronx Housing. And I, along with them, knocked door to door to make sure tenants knew their right. We organized a know your rights meeting for the tenants and we are organ, helping them organize a tenants association uh and make sure that they know that they have rights, the right to live in a safe and healthy environment. Um, i- if you need any help with your housing, my office is open, there, there's nothing I won't do from connecting you with an agency or nonprofit. Literally knocking on doors in your building to make sure that you have the, the right environment uh to live in. Uh, I, I will leave it there and, um, I want to wish you all, you know, thank you all, uh, on, 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 on CD. Thank you, thanks Farah, thanks Julie.
Thank you, I'm sorry I rushed you, but we're fortunate this evening that we have quite a few. Sorry to rush you, thank you, thank you, Eric. Okay, we have, uh, is anyone here from council member Carmen de la Rosa's office? That's a representative? Okay, I'll come back to her in a minute, okay?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Wait, can you give us a few minutes, we're just gonna jump around a bit, sorry about that. Okay, we're going to go with Senator Esteban Rivera, who's been here since the beginning and thank you. You told me you had time, so that's why I figured I'd take you as soon as I could.
No worries.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, first, it is obvious that what is in everybody's mind needs to be acknowledged. Uh, this is a new part of the, of the district for me, uh, obviously a new part of my, my own community that I've never attended before. Uh, and it's obvious that what is happening, uh, all the way in Israel is incredibly impactful to so many folks I represent. Uh, so I will, uh, I will first. Because it might be necessary to establish that, to make sure that you're safe and those, uh, so we're working along. We want to make sure that we are thoughtful about it, so that it's actually something that solves. Powers that we gave to this agency this last part of the cycle, to make sure that we can not only shut those prisons down, but make it impossible for them to operate, uh, something like ten thousand dollars a day if you're operating illegally. Uh, as, as well as, uh, we're trying to impact not only the business owner, who is obviously sadly, but even impacting the landlord who is allowing that store to be there. So please, we can, uh, so please work, uh, let our office know if you identify some of these locations and we'll work in a world state agency to make sure that we can uh, do the enforcement necessary so that those places that should not be operating, do not operate. Uh, last but not least, just, uh, again, remind you, we have, uh, my office remains at two four three two Grand Concourse, this is twenty seven chapters, just thirty more seconds. Uh, but our satellite offices continue, we, uh, my, uh, my team member in particular, Rich Hyder, who is here, so our community affairs representative. We do, uh, we do office hours, uh, across the district and we do some right here in Riverdale. Uh, reminding you again, where, where we do. Riverdale Senior Services. Second and fourth Wednesday of every month, which you can always call my office, uh, we are available every day. We have, uh, immigration and benefit services, we have housing services as well as tend to support the services. Um, be in touch with my office if there's things that we think we could be helpful to you with. Uh, and with that, I will thank you for your time, I'll remain for a little bit longer, but, uh, thank you for having me be on today.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Chuck. Chuck, where are you at? The managers?
Senator, one of the things that the legislature can do is both for the public interest and in the interest of people for unfortunate, uh, the, the benefits of children. Is to make changes, provide for changing. In a multiple dwelling, you cannot have six people in a room in your shelter, you can't. In a multiple dwelling, can't have the bathroom on the floor. In a shelter, you can't. That's because the legislature, not the legislature, which you said is, uh, provides an exemption for those kinds of services. So you have the infu, maybe having five truly homeless people who need care in a room with a skyscraper. Because they do not separate, one from another. That is an area of the law that desperately brought down for somebody who guts and I know that. To take the law and look at it, they are not entitled to an exemption. All that they do by having that exemption is enrich a bunch of lawyers for government to represent ninety percent of the applicants to the whole of the church.
One thing I would suggest, sir, is that we have, we have a conversation not left during this because it's obviously a longer one, it is not there at all time, as you know, if you are. Uh, but I would certainly want to talk to you about it in more length, if that's possible.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Javina. Sorry, Vice Chair has a question for you as well.
Yes. Uh, with the, with the walk-through, that's a great idea, but, uh, obviously there'll be, well, not obviously, but it'd be impressive to be one for people who work, like a Monday at ten forty-five, you know, it's very private diarrhea.
This is, this is one of the, so, there is, uh, as you folks know, I, uh, I got redrawn in my district last year, right? So I've just moved about three weeks ago. So I have been trying, we have been, there's a lot of things that are, that have been kind of pushed back as part of schedule because of my, of the move that I had to do. So we're finding any time that we had available to be able to do these things. Um, I should tell you that we're, that I'm very open, as I said earlier, if it doesn't work for folks, we are absolutely willing to, to figure out if there's two, three, even if it's two or three folks, I mean, obviously a bigger group would be better, but we should, we should work, I'll make sure that Brent doesn't contact this view. And again, if, if folks are on the, on the Zoom or here on the table, if you want to work with us to kind of figure out a time, and, and if it's not, and it doesn't have to be that particular part of the, of the district, it could be your block. It could be somebody who wants to show me that I might not have seen before. So we're more than willing to learn, to figure out how we can go and spend an hour, an hour and a half walking around so we can point out the six, the issue here, the issue there. So we'd more than willing to work with you and anybody else to sit to figure out a time that I saw one last Tuesday.
And a, a very quick second point, on the, on the cannabis, it's of concern, the enforcement certainly is of concern for people who want to open legitimate.
Yes.
Because it's been, at the same time, decriminalization it seems, and the legalization for dispensaries, which don't always go together. I was concerned with something you said about from an economic development standpoint.
Yes.
Um, the landlords.
Yes.
Of going, I mean, not every landlord is this rich evil person, you know.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't claim that.
There could be, there could be situations where you're going in there, it ends up being something. And then now the landlord, action being taken against the landlord, who may or may not be able to afford lawyers to get the person out, or things that should be enforced by other means.
So what we're saying, what we did, the, what we did during, during the, during the budget season was we actually enhanced the powers of the agency to give us different tools. So it's not that we're going to use every single one, but there's certain instances in which we find that landlords fully knowing that what is coming into their facility, into their, into their building is a facility that's not legal about to be there, like a cannabis dispensary. And then we're basically saying, we have now a tool available to us that we can actually go after the landlord as well. Current, like, the, the first, the first instance is identifying the, 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 the facility, like the front, like the, the store. Uh, identifying it, going into it, uh, finding material that is legally there, and then claiming that material, you know, being able to, to, to seize it, confiscate it, and then finding that person who is the proprietor or the operator of that particular building, or that, I'm sorry, that particular business. What we're saying is that we have added tools, which include going after landlords as well. It's not an automatic thing, but it's one of the things that's available to us, so that we can put pressure in any way that we can. Because I, I voted to, to legalize cannabis. I want to make sure that, that the, that the, that the sale actually happens in the places that are licensed. Since the goal here was to make sure that we have the, that first of all, that the people who have access to it are folks who have been impacted by that criminalization that we had before. And also that the revenue that's from it actually goes to fix some of the harm that was caused by that criminalization. None of that can be achieved if we don't actually do it right. So it's a tricky thing, and we, and there's no mistake, they're trying to do it like we are trying, that we're trying to do it, it's very tricky. But we found that a lot of people started to take advantage and started to just open up everywhere, they are in so many places. And we want to make sure that this place is less, the places that, that should be able to sell are the ones that are licensed. And that they're, and then they're in, uh, appropriate places. There is, there is, as a discussion was had earlier by one of the, one of the folks who spoke, uh, during the open session, it is not appropriate to have them everywhere. So we want to make sure they're in the appropriate place, if they're legally there, and we just want to have as many tools available to us so that we can make sure that the folks who are doing it legally don't continue to do so.
Thank you, our public safety chairperson, Henry, and economic chairperson, Nick Fazio behind you. That's a subject that will be on their, in, in their committees moving forward, so hopefully you'll see a lot of them. Uh, thank you so much, uh, we're gonna, okay, can you make it?
Will please.
Okay, go ahead.
And just a, a very quick reminder, Riversport Health, one five nine nine home care.
Yes.
Everybody else that has, you get the, not one, I know that you had got the, the has to pay for the home care workers, which are good on that, but Riversport Health, one dollar.
We'll have, we have to follow up on that.
Please follow up, I, I asked you to do the meeting.
Thank you for reminding, again, out of the, in one month, very quickly, I looked at forty places. Uh, finally, we can move about three weeks ago, and now I started to live a role, not just a bunch of boxes. So now I'm gonna be able to focus more now that I have that life situation set. But yes, thank you for, for reminding.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here, you see how nice you are, so we'd love to see you again. Thank you, okay, the next speaker will be from the mayor's office, Community Affairs Alita Dow. Can, Alita Dow, can you please unmute yourself from the mayor's office?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, first I do want to just, you know, send out the prayers and condolences for all of the people that have lost their loved ones. Um, you know, what has happened in the last few days has been horrific and, um, you know, prayers and just massive prayers continue to go out to all these families that have been negatively impacted by this horrible situation. Um, I do have some information regarding some of the things that the mayor has undertaken. Um, and one of them is that, um, the mayor and the sanitation commissioner have announced the next phase of their war on rats. And this includes all businesses that must put their trash in containers. So, um, I know, um, a lot of community board aid is really good with putting in their complaints, but I do want to ask that if you notice a business is not complying, so please make sure that you first dial your three one one complaint. And, and if that, then they haven't been addressed, so, you know, you're very easily able to email me. Um, I always share my information, even though we don't have a chat here. So if someone wanted to take down my number, it's fine, it's area code, uh, nine one four 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 six eight three nine three. And, um, I, I welcome everyone to reach me, um, regarding any complaint in the community that hasn't been addressed. Um, also, the mayor, um, and Hertz have announced a partnership to create green jobs, provide workforce training and electrify vehicles. Um, the mayor also announced that he broke a record, six billion dollars in spending with New York City MWBE firms in the first fiscal year of the administration, um, and that's a record. And as, uh, as the numbers of asylum seekers in the city care, um, top sixty thousand, the mayor announced a thirty day notice for adult migrants um, to intensify the caseworkers to help adult migrant seekers take the next step. Obviously, that's, you know, encouraging the movement so that people can get out of whatever circumstance they're in, whether that's, you know, in the shelter and moving into more permanent housing, or getting from out of the street into some type of self shelter system. Um, the mayor also launched an historical effort to build, in quotations, a little more housing in every neighborhood. So the city of Yes for Housing Opportunities will create an additional hundred thousand homes for two hundred and fifty thousand New Yorkers. The mayor also gives New Yorkers the ability to use the city-funded rental, um, assistant vouchers across New York State. So I'm not sure if everyone is familiar, but, um, New Yorkers with city steps, it's a housing voucher, will now be able to find permanent affordable housing, not only within side New York City, but across the entire New York State. Um, the mayor also made an abortion care available via telehealth to New Yorkers through the NYC Health and Hospitals. And, uh, the mayor announced the fifteen million dollars in new federal funding to plant and maintain the city trees. And, uh, the mayor announced the fifteen million dollars in new federal funding to plant and maintain the city trees. Um, I know that we get a lot of complaints about the trees, and I ask that you still please continue to, um, putting your three one one complaint numbers about any trees that, um, may not be healthy or are uprooted. And if they, again, haven't been addressed in a certain amount of time, please send me over the complaint number and I'll follow up. Also, the mayor, um, and the HPD Commissioner have taken actions to connect New Yorkers to affordable housing more quickly. And they've done that by eliminating the unnecessary credit checks for voucher holders. So those vouchers that I was just referencing, um, they're not going to be asking, they're, try to stop them from having credit checks, which will then make it a little bit easier to move into apartments. Also, um, the mayor just concluded a two-day summit on fentanyl, which is the crisis that, um, we're all aware of. I know there's so much happening, so many things happening. Um, but fentanyl is something that we also know is a huge problem in our city. And, uh, the mayor, um, he got with a whole bunch of local leaders across the country, and they really want to work on figuring out how and what's the next, um, combat for this. And, um, that's about it. Again, you know, today is a very sad day. Um, and my prayers go to everyone that hasn't been impacted by this. But, um, if you need me, I'm always just a call away, and I will be here, um, for the entire, um, meeting if you guys need to ask me any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alina. And I know we want to thank you for being a constant guest at our meetings. We appreciate that. Thank you. Our next speaker is from Congressman Richie Torres' office, Joe McManus. Joe McManus. Oh, gotta wait until I mute yourself, Joe.
Okay, there it is. Uh, good evening, everybody. I know this is the first time that I've been here, and I'd like to say, uh, Congressman Torres is definitely in solidarity with the Jewish people and a very strong support of Israel. Since you'd have a chat, I sent my contact information to the district manager. And anybody that has a federal issue and is a constituent, by federal issues, I mean, like Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, Post Office, Veterans Affairs, we can help you navigate the system. Uh, one thing I'd like to mention, Congressman Torres introduced a bill with Congress member Malia Takas. It's HR five five one eight. It's the Right to Medicare Act. This bill, if passed, would allow each participant in Medicare to select if they want regular Medicare or Medicare Advantage. And so they would not be forced into either one. Uh, I also sent the district manager the bill. So if you need to see it, I think the best thing to do is contact her, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go back. We just have about three more elected officials, and then we'll be going on to our agenda. It's a little after eight, so I think we're pretty much on track considering we have a lot of guest speakers. We're gonna, and then we're also gonna go back after the elected officials, Jean finally appeared. On Zoom, Jean, we're gonna come to you as soon as we finish with the elected officials. Uh, we're gonna go back to Carmen Dela, Councilmember Carmen Dela Rosa's rep. And I apologize again, we had to stop maybe now we're coming back to you. Okay, is anyone from Councilmember Sanchez's office?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, and I won't interrupt you again.
No worries. I, I completely understand. No worries.
Thank you.
My name is Jamila Sandoval. I'm from Carmen Dela Rosa's office, a councilwoman of District Ten. I'm her Director of Community Affairs and also scheduler. I'm coming on here to say hello, good evening, introduce myself, um, and send, uh, my, uh, prayers and, um, positive energy towards, um, all the victims are, are, um, that are in Israel at the moment. I just wanted to say, uh, that we represent Marble Hill, and that's why I come to Community Board Eight. And if anything is needed from our office, so please contact us. We work closely with Tony from the, um, Resident Council Me, um, Association and other organizations in the area. Um, but because we're like in a little nook right across the street, um, from Manhattan, as we can say, um, I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that we are available for, um, any assistance in Marble Hill. So I, I can't put my information, but I would definitely email, um, uh, the office so that you guys can have that. My email and also my works, so. I just wanted to say good evening.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, and thank you for being patient. Okay, is anyone here from Councilmember Sanchez's office? Okay, and lastly, and vice elected officials, I know we have someone from Senator Jackson's office.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna keep it short. Um, I'm gonna just read a portion of what the senator wrote about what happened last weekend. Uh, my heartfelt condolences go out to the families who have lost their loved ones due to tax brackets. I've been a perfectly committed to these acts applied, as they only let further loss of innocent lives both since Israel and Palestine. A call among us to remain steadfast in promoting peace and resolution that respect the rights of all people to live without fear and terror. My God's prayer is all those suffering during these challenging times. It is imperative that we work toward lasting peace and disrepair. Emphasize empathy, love, and commitment to our shared humanity. Thus, Senator Jackson's comment that he posted over the weekend, and you guys what happened. Um, so our office is available Monday to Friday. Um, you can find us at thirty thirty private suite seven oh one by appointment preferably. You can find us by email at jackson@NYSenate.gov. Our phone number is two one two, five four four zero one seven three. And you have any questions, you can find me here or online, you can email at two U I N S A C at NYSenate.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and our gallery person, Jean, he was online, council.
I might have left Jean can now see back on.
Okay, so then we'll go on to the next item, Chair's Report, which will be brief. Uh, you can take a look at the executive report, the miscellaneous information. I'll just remind the new members and agencies and members, Farinae are scheduling a training orientation for the new members and chairs on October twenty eighth. On twenty sixth, from six thirty to nine P M, these R S V P by the eighteenth of this month. Um, the Van Quatlin Park Alliance is holding an event this month at Van Quatlin Park, and the office sent a letter of support along with the fifty present, and that will also be brought up in the Public Safety with a resolution, I believe. I appointed as an interim chairperson for the Housing Committee, Rosemary Ginty. Thank you again for stepping in. And we will be having elections this evening, and as far as my report, oh, okay, I forget. Farinae met with the Deputy Commissioner of DCAST, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services Office, and Charles Gross, and Assistant Commissioner Hamilton, and it actually looks promising that they are working on securing, on securing. But we're working hand in hand with them in finding a location, um, a few places that were that in the past. They are looking back into it, but hasn't been leased. Um, they gave us a few options, and we're going to be looking at places for an office in the future. So it's more positive than it was last month. And that's it for my report. Any questions? Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next is the Treasury Ministry, Treasury Ministry report.
Okay, I think everyone got a copy of the, uh, October Treasury Report, so I'll just be brief. Um, Table one shows, uh, the overall budget, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, four thirty-two, broken down broadly into personal services, insurance staff payroll. And other than personal services, uh, the funds we use to pay bills, supplies for the office. And as you can see, the updated, the salaries paid, and we have twenty-one thousand, seven seventy-three left in O T P S, which is broken down in Table one point one two, the various spending codes. And you can see the balances for the various categories, so we're, we're paying our bills. Uh, one bit of good news we received, um, just a few days ago, is that, uh, community boards will not be affected by the proposed budget cuts, will not be affected by the budget cuts, so that's good. But anyway, we still have the ten thousand dollar cushion in actual code four ninety-nine, which we like to give as a safety measure. And really don't anticipate any huge purchases coming up that are imminent. Um, also look to buy as any usual office supplies, W K A's and things like that. But we will continue to monitor the situation and be as conservative, uh, with spending as we can. Uh, Table one point two, there are no budget modifications this month. So, uh, one point three, uh, one thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars on Comfort Funds. Items that, that are input into the system but have not yet been paid. And finally, Table one point four is just an update of our internal energy detail, which is separately maintained by Ron B., who likes to be here for all reference. And that is it. Thank you.
District Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, everything's been in full swing this past September. As our Chair mentioned, we've been meeting with, um, DCAST to discuss and look at some new office spaces. Um, I have attended along with our Budget Chair, the three borough-wide budget consultation meetings with, um, our city agencies over the last few weeks, and I will send those responses this week to our, um, Executive Committee. Uh, the Chair, the Budget Chair, and I have also met with Councilman Duneleks, as he mentioned before, to go over, um, our, our budget priorities and compare them with things that he is funding as well. Um, we are also working on final details, as Chair Reyes has mentioned, for our new Chair Orientation, October twenty-sixth, at Down East Bar Grill. Uh, I'm excited to hear our own Marty Walcliff make a presentation. And we have invited representatives from the Department of City Planning to give a presentation regarding new process, zoning laws, and anything you might have questions on. Uh, I do want to ask that you R S V P, as mentioned, as soon as possible. And we, we just want to make sure we're prepared and know how many people are coming. And I really encourage all of our twelve new board members and our new chairs to attend. Um, and of course, all the board is invited, and hopefully you can come give your own insights and your experience to our members. Um, I have been very busy interviewing, uh, people to fill our community coordinator position. And I was impressed with a few candidates, and hopefully we'll be announcing, we have a new community coordinator very soon. I know that Mayor Adams announced there'll be a hiring freeze for the city, but I just found out and I'm very happy to report that it does not apply to the community board, so that was a relief. Um, lastly, I had held a District Service Cabinet Meeting last week, and I will send a memo to our Executive Committee. Thank you to our officers and Chair, uh, for putting in extra time, as always, and giving your continued support to the office.
Thank you. Sylvia Alexander.
Here.
Julian Baez.
Here.
Constable Bonn to Watson.
Here.
Aluba Carberry. Bob Bender. Tara Blake.
Here.
Kelly, you, where is this? Christopher Calhoun.
Here.
Sebastian Chilapoli.
Yeah.
DeCham.
Present.
Ingrid Delion. Margaret Dela, present. Robert Donato. No. Nicholas Fazio.
Present.
Stephen Frum. David Galman.
Present.
Miriam Gibbs.
Present.
Rosemary Ginty.
Here.
Um, Dr. Gomez is E C. Edward Green.
Present.
Emily Hausman. Rashida Hillier.
Here.
Robert Chiklowski. Bart Rokeo.
Here.
Scott Prompeacher.
Present.
Josh Land.
Here.
Elaine Lobos.
Here.
Rita Popterlow.
Yep.
Oscar Pimentes. Charles Mordler.
Here.
Theodore Morris. Omar Murray. Julie Campbell, present. Oh, sorry. Julie Reyes. Daniel Wellen. Don't give me two pages. Georgia Sotiano. Ron Batting. Jessica Sosa.
Here.
Laura Spalter. Deborah Travis. Sergio Villanueva. Martin Walcliff.
Here.
Three, four. Present. At forty-four. We have a call. Okay, we'll go on to the next item, number nine, the Election Board Committee Chairpersons. Are there any nominations from the floor for the Position of Housing Chairperson?
Maybe I nominate, uh, folks who are given the possibility.
Second, Miss Sylvia. Okay, so, is that?
Yes.
So now we, is there a motion to close nomination? Motion, Scott, around. Second. Okay, so now we're gonna vote. The motion to close nominations. Okay. Anyone abstaining? You oppose?
No.
No, I'm voting my way out. Is anyone abstaining? Anyone oppose? Anyone present but cannot vote? That means that all is in favor. Nice and simple. Thank you. Okay, now we have to vote for it, because that was just for the motion. Okay, so, is anyone abstaining from voting for Rosemary?
Let's see, I move that one vote be cast.
Sounds good to me, but I can't say anything. Second, thank you. Anyone oppose? In favor? Okay, any objections? It's unanimous, all in favor. Thank you. Congratulations, Rosemary. Thanks, everyone. Why don't you look, just briefly, why don't you let the new people know a little bit about you? Because those of us who know your background in housing, just a little snippet.
Okay.
So, because we have a lot of new people.
Okay, so, um, maybe just to make background in the Community Board, the Position, uh, Chair of the three years, like, my chair for the year, the Chair of the Environment and Sanitation Committee, Chair of the Work and Methodist Committee, and the Chair of the Course. I'm very happy, Sheriff Harrison. Very full of time, full of consumption. Uh, my, my background is, uh, masters of urban planning, and I just have a big trade here with her. So, uh, master of the thing, I was, well, the tree, uh, that's not worth the city. So, uh, the master of the thing, uh, will treat the best network for the city. We're in the progress for a third batch. I'm not very tired, so we have time. That'll be great.
Yes, thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to environment and sanitation. Are there any nominations from the floor for the position of environment sanitation? No? Okay. So we'll move on then to committee reports. Just a reminder, if we can stay at minimum three minutes. It is eight-thirty, and we'll just go on to the committee reports, and we'll start off with managers.
And Chair, we have a meeting of managers scheduled for the eighteenth day of the week. There are the following items, among others. Last meeting, we had reports on three different senate events. One of the, at that time, had no objection, other than the fact that...
It's one of the speaker. We can hear you.
Other than the fact that they now seem to have some issues with the... They have not notified that, uh, of that they would make the... One of them doesn't have a proposal for a regular ancillary dormitory without any condition to do with sanitary sewer. Not necessarily the competition. We'll see what happens on that at the next meeting. And what we expect to be able to... And the third one raises an issue, which could be an issue of course, of course. There is a property located in a very sensitive place, right on the corner, next to the white wall, where all the traffic, gesture of persons, morning workouts, where they propose to put in a school and a dormitory, if some sort. The only problem is, there's a restriction. It says it can only be used for residents. Question is whether or not, or if it's... There are two other issues that I want for clarification. The first is that we are currently getting, very shortly, a certification of the... From City Planning on the proposed zoning test change. This is not something that you can lightly look at or think about. If enacted in its terms, you can say goodbye to North River Hill. And all single family homes. The density that will be permitted will doom single family homes, because it was badly constructed. There's a copy of a program put together by the City of Jerusalem that was called the Tamal Project, in which it allowed people to build additional to their existing envelope of that. And here they're going to allow another building in the backyard, as long as it's affordable. When they tell me what definition of affordable housing is, I'll look through here. But the fact is, that that will be coming up at some point in the next few months. We're gonna try and put together a task force, a few people, who can look at it, be there, who are supposed to represent a few points across the spectrum. So that we know where we're going. This is, in my view, the single most important issue. Of the thirty ideas that I've... But whether the, whether you're talking about the people, either by their bootstraps or the neighborhood, or put together the money, buy a home with a mortgage, and now have a decision to make, as to whether or not the children of the city can go. And so, it's silly, but that's my opinion. Others may disagree, and you'll have to, to hope. Have to start. There, as I said, the two issues, next one is... Marty will report to you on a piece of, in the subject of the task force. Pass here and there, which is primed air, stag building. And then before that, what we did is... One of the speakers addressed the issue on Waldo Avenue, involving... Right around the corner, as to what is good for you, what is gonna happen, uh, stag building there. First, the rumor mill had that this was going to be a whole control town. Based on the conversation we had with the stag people. That is the furthest state at the moment from this, by, uh, because he made a representation. He's an advocate, I believe he's not gonna go do that. We have to show that so far. That is the top of our list. The issue is the migrant share. These are families. They are going to be part of migrant families. I'm a migrant. I came in as a resident. I was able to pull myself up out of the block. He didn't have any right to have a state-type care with anyone else. Not safe in the whole country. Please don't leave that one. It's different. These are people who want a home. They are the families. And if this works out, I don't know if you know, I don't know if it will be necessary to ensure that they have proper lessons, proper education. But if it looks out, I mean, very serious. The benefits of providing that, true. Marty, what are... If you're the fellow people, if you're...
Hey, I'm just glad to see Chuck made it home, so we go to that show.
We are notorious as a city state, which is... Having a very short term. What is on our mind and what we objective today, we forget about tomorrow in terms of next all day, or the next crisis. This is gonna take a while. I was there. I can show you right now the video taken by one of the survivors of the massacre of two hundred and sixty young kids attending a music festival. It's on my cell phone. I can tell you that kids, babies have been found now in some of the streets where their heads were cut off. This is worse than anything you've ever heard of. It's Iceland times ten. Don't forget it. Because it's gonna last a while, for this like a thousand. This is ironic, this is sophisticated. You know how they got in? They tied motors to their back and flew over the fences. They flew into the kibbutz. They used all sorts of a protective, but these folks would never look again. They had a... This is giving a very, very serious problem. The world must have paid attention. Don't lose patience.
Thank you, Chuck.
Shortly, uh, by the end of the year, that building on Riverdale Avenue will be completed. I will have a report from the committee discussing the value it has been to work with stag. And we hope that the next construction, the responses to the community, as they have been in respect of David and I, and after a community meeting with them monthly. And, uh, so, go to you is by January, be able to move in, hopefully. Now, it's just... I will be as brief as possible, like, three items I want to raise. And if you have any questions, and there's time at the end, be happy to answer. Otherwise, communicate with me directly, email, or the member of the committee. And all of this will be discussed, uh, Thursday night, this coming Thursday, LRE meeting. So if you have questions, bring it in, or forward it. First is OML. There's been some concern by some people that what's good for one chair is not necessarily good for another chair when it comes to implementation of EC or extraordinary circumstances to be able to participate by our hybrid process. The question is, should there be more stringent rules so that all chairs behave the same way? Or will somebody's sniffle be excused by pneumonia, it won't be, and there should be some consistency. We're looking to that. I just want to add to this, and it's something we're happy about, in fact, is when the OML came out, they had a clause about needing to observe and be concerned about the Americans with Disabilities Act, and bring questions, what does that mean, if there's some guidance. The committee on open government says, can't tell you anything, check elsewhere. Well, we checked, looked. Finally, a number of us attended most recent committee on open government Zoom conference on the opening law. I just bought my fourth one, and I keep hoping to hear something different, and do not until this time, when they surprise us and tell us that they've been amended to the open meeting law. Now, I'll just lay it out for one. The record is that if somebody is disabled, not only can they participate under the concept of extraordinary circumstances, but they can participate in addition to, uh, they can count as part of the corps. Someone who EC cannot, they can vote, and they can speak, but they're not part of the corps. Someone who declared as being disabled can, we counted the, uh, the, uh, form. We've asked for definition of disabled. They put us to executive law section two ninety-two, which is quite expensive. However, uh, when asked at the Zoom, the answer was, someone says that disabled, they're disabled. Not quite sure how to find that, because that's the best I can do at the moment. Conflict of, second item, conflicts of interest. I sent down to all board members a copy of the document put out by the... The conflict of interest board with respect to plain English language for community board members. So you don't have to personally go through the city charter to know what you can and cannot do with this document. I advise you, I suggest you look at it. Most of it looks at pretty much, you cannot abuse your office in any way. And we're treated to this, to this concept, as if they were employees of the city, and you have to be careful. And as I've done before, at every LRE meeting, I share documents, get our comfort with people. They give us, uh, what their decisions and outcomes are of investigations they have made. And we read these and we laugh. Central way, how could these people be so stupid and still have done some of these things? And I can, I will, out of my head, a couple like, uh, fireworks in mortuary, it takes bodies back to his funeral home, so he can have private business when the body's at it there. In some better words. And we read about community board members who have violated conflict of interest. Partly building, uh, there is a concern expressed through me that there has been the perception of some people that there has been an abuse of the right to, uh, to abstain. Now, everyone here has the right to abstain and vote. Just quickly, you can vote one of four ways. You can say yes, you can say no, and abstain. And you can abstain, we should call, with cause, now it's called president ineligible to vote. That means you have a conflict of interest. If you, with the minutes for the, notice goes out of the agenda, notice goes out, these are the resolutions that will come up. I believe it's your responsibility to look at them and say, I got a problem with this, or have a question about this, and you really should come somewhat educated on what that is, so that your questions can be asked and answered. So, this is concerning, we have some basic votes coming up in the near future. And we had a couple of occasions, I can give one in name, where the extension's one, and yeses and nos, lost. So, in... In the precedents concept, which I'll explain Tuesday, Thursday night, and with members, with the precedents concept, we are bound by federal state law. So open meetings law takes precedence, as does the city charter, and then comes, uh, if I was to look to the Robin's Rules. There are many, many cases where Robin's Rules is overruled by the city charter. Something like they said, the Robin's Rule says, two-thirds of voters required, super majority. City Charter says, no, simple majority. So there were a number of occasions, and the question came up. And I did a little research on it, which I shared with committee members, and we will discuss on Thursday night.
The one at the... You have to hit the red button at the back.
Is this working? So, um, I'm the strategist, I'm the chair of the Parks Recreation Committee. I'm gonna start with the good news, which was, uh, on September twentieth, the International Cricket Council told us, informed us that they will not be hosting the T20 Cricket World Cup at Nefertiti Park. And I wanna just thank the New York Crystal Parks, the Bronx Council for Environmental Quality, Bronx School Issue for Parks and Green Spaces, the New York Cricket League, Bronx Community Board, A, that's us, Loving the Bronx, New York Road Runners, Riverdale Main Street Alliance, Nefertiti Park Track Club, Women of Woodland, Nefertiti Nature Group, and of course, uh, Nefertiti Park Alliance, along with Congressman Richard Torres, Assembly Member Jeff Denowitz, City Council Member Eric Denowitz, and New York City Council, uh, Council Member Shifar Krishnam. All of these folks came out, and just in, in support of maintaining a public space and, uh, and the document, the Public Trust Act. So, um, the, I think the, the board itself, you know, we never really ruled on whether we thought there should be a cricket stadium, ever. But that doesn't mean that, um, that the proposal should have gone through on its own. I think that it was good that they took the initiative and picked up a more suitable location for such a short time period. So, we did encourage them, we reached out to them, and encouraged them to, uh, to support our cricket teams, though, and cricket in Nefertiti Park when the T20 is happening in twenty twenty-four, through free clinics, through free tournaments, and, and through just, uh, working with Nefertiti Park Alliance itself, uh, to, to improve the, the cricket facilities at, at Nefertiti Park. And then, uh, I just wanna bring up, uh, the Brussels Park issue. I try to kind of get folks up to speed on what's going on there. So, uh, so I was informed just this afternoon, uh, um, the developer of a fifty-five hatch plate has paid the portion of a mapped...
has paved a portion of a mapped unbuilt street that is directly adjacent to Russell Park. If you don't know where Russell Park is, it is, it runs, it's on the corner of Manhattan College Parkway and Waldo. And this paved street is, or this one, this mapped unpaved street is West two hundred and forty-second street, or would be West two hundred and forty-second street if it had ever been built, which it had not. So it's approximately fifteen feet of land that runs adjacent to the park. And the expectation is that, you know, they, when they built this new building, that they would, you know, restore the, the, the unmapped street itself, which is essentially unrecognizable from the park itself. It, it, it has some, some street infrastructure, but it's mostly just, it's natural soil. And so, about a year ago, the thirty-eight seventy-five Old Operations Cooperative, Safe Russell Park, and Stewart's Russell Park, they, you know, reached out because they opposed the use of this paper street as a driveway, and they were concerned that it was going to be paved because they don't want buses and trunks and the kinds of heavy usage that comes from a school, which is what the basement, the base level of this building is going to be. And they're also concerned, I think quite clearly so, that the intersection where this driveway comes out from, or where this paper street kind of meets Manhattan College Parkway, is a kind of complicated intersection. It's three ways, it has a light, but it's also right next to Kelly Commons Building for Manhattan College and the main campus entrance and Russell Park, which has people, pedestrians coming and going from the park, and then folks coming and going from the cooperative itself. And so, additionally, the street itself is, it's on that street, it's fifteen feet wide. And when you park on it, there's just not a lot of room to maneuver. And the expectation is, is this is going to be a school, there's going to be a lot of people coming and going. And the cooperative was not informed that the, this paving was going to happen. The developer has really not been in touch with the cooperative about, you know, what they were intending to do with it, which was one of the issues we were having last year, is we were trying to investigate kind of what the situation was. Luke worked on this because of former coordinator. And when, when he investigated it, what he found was that that, that the, that the developer does not have an easement, that their property line does not extend this way, that the unpaved unbuilt street is purely DOT property. And so today, when I discovered, was informed that the developer themselves had decided to pave it, it was seemingly, it appears to be a land grab, that they're trying to get it paved so that they can use it. And that, you know, once they started using it, that there's really no going back, and there's not a lot for the community to do. So, and I wish to, to Chuck honestly, because he's got much, much, much more experience in land use issues of understanding what the rights of the developer are, and then what the expectations we should have for the developer are. And he recommended a resolution, that, for, to bring a resolution to the floor tonight, just a very simple one, just to say that we're opposed to this paving with some conditions. Oh, I put something together, which I would like to read, to give you a sense of what the, what the simplicity of it would be. Therefore be it resolved, the Community Board A opposes the mapped but unbuilt portion of West two forty-second street between Dash Place and Waldo Avenue, adjacent to Russell Park, being paved until appropriate measures have been enacted to ensure its exclusive use as a walkway, except where emergency access is mandated by the City of New York. I add that last part because there's this kind of handmade sign that says it's supposed to be kept open for emergency use. So I don't, we don't, we don't really understand what that, who put that there, or why that's there. But we, we don't, we want to know. We would like to have the developer, the stewards of Russell Park, and all of the stakeholders, DOT parks, and then the school come to the next Parks Committee meeting so that we can actually have a full discussion of what, of what the needs are of this particular driveway, and if we can use it equitably as a walk, you know, walkway. Oh, here's a good, here's a picture of it for those who are not familiar with it, this is what it looks like now. Yesterday, it was, it was just kind of a sandy, rocky area with some grass and some weeds and a little bit of concrete, of concrete pad right at the front. So they paved the whole darn thing, so now I want to go get a car and park there, it's so, so nice looking. So, do I have, I guess, I would need to make a motion to amend the agenda to have a vote for the resolution.
So.
Is there a second? And so then, I would be, I would like to move that we, we pass this resolution. Is there any? Okay.
One more vote. Yes.
Yeah. Appropriate city agents, if this were, if this were bound to be inappropriate, not, should not, not so, appropriate city agents, I wonder if it's possible to just so they can get started, possibly. Well, we, we, I think there's, it's not crucial, I just, yeah.
At this point, the lead, the lead on top.
Let me just take two things, this has, this has error. We went through all of this, when the construction of the building was contemplated at the beginning. And it is said that land use, land use would, that is an issue of time, what was going to happen with that essentially after, was intended in major part to be available for the existing house, apartment house next to New York, or has a Waldo address. And the people in the back, the developer, the timber, needed that because under the general city law, the expert of all of the zoning stuff is, you know, Chair Bowden. General city law provides, in order to build any such apartment house, you must have access to a public street. Access to be provided by a rough pathway or the light, it doesn't have to be paid. Their excuse is going to be, we needed this for access, and our CEO, therefore that's a, that's nonsense. This is the same nice people who gave us the problem, the villa, Rosa. So this is not anything new. I'll second that resolution first too, if you quickly do a vote for the record, or the agenda for the purposes of the second of this actual resolution.
Does anyone oppose the agenda being changed to add this resolution? Is anyone saving? How will we, on that, on that mission?
Could you reread the, be a result?
Okay, yeah.
Please.
So, therefore be it resolved, Community Board A opposes the mapped but unbuilt portion of West two forty-second street between Dash Place and Waldo Avenue, adjacent to Russell Park, being paved until appropriate measures have been enacted to ensure its exclusive use as a walkway, except where emergency access is mandated by the City of New York, and we call on the Department of Transportation to investigate the situation.
The leverage down the road we have to force is this is press passed by the developer by building on the land. He's using the city's property for his own personal benefit. If he screws around, I'll tag this.
Josh.
Oh, it's on the DOT, it's a street. Yeah, it's a street. It's a city of unbuilt, mapped streets, yeah. Yeah. I will also add that there is construction, there, if we just, when we have photos, there's a construction debris that has been pushed from the construction site into the forested parts of Russell Park, just recently, in the last few weeks, and that there's been severe runoff from the rest of the, of the unmapped, unbuilt, or mapped unbuilt streets that we expect them to restore.
Can we come over and give both our resolutions?
Yeah, is there any other questions?
All the whole? The expansions?
Great, thank you. My, my next meeting is, and where we will be discussing this will be Wednesday, October twenty-sixth.
Thank you, I know you put that together in an afternoon. The next you, Julia, is on Zoom.
About public safety in CBT.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sure. I'm so sorry, we have like eleven resolutions on safety, maybe that's why. Okay, sorry, Julia, we're going to go to Adrian for public safety.
Thanks, I'm good without the mic, everybody can understand, right? Alright, so, public safety, we, our public safety committee had six resolutions, they're all renewal applications, SLAs. And one is for Chipotle Mexican Grill, number twenty-three oh nine at one ninety-three West two thirty-seven street. The other is for Malcon Restaurant, fifty-five ninety-two dash fifty-five ninety-four Broadway. Riverdale Gourmet, thirty-five forty-three Riverdale Avenue. Ayu Sushi, thirty-five thirty-two eight Johnson Avenue. Leche Ateo Restaurant, fifty-seven sixty-one Broadway, and Kaia Bar and Grill at thirty-six, thirty-eight Bailey Avenue. The fiftieth precinct stated they were unaware of any prior notable disturbance to the complaints at any of these locations. And the public safety committee unanimously approved all these applications. I would like to take a vote on all of them as a block, unless anybody has an objection. Call the question. Hold on this. Hey, are there any, I bet you fold this out, you, I, I do this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No.
Any abstentions? Any opposed?
So, those were our six resolutions. I do have a couple of resolutions I want to bring from the floor for a vote. Do we, well, let me just give you a little background. So, the first one is for an event called Hypetoberfest. It's the Bronx Beer Hall, which is not in the area of here, while the Roper on Arthur Avenue, they are sponsoring this event, Hypetoberfest. And I'm just going to, rather than get into a whole explanation, right, I'm just going to read the resolution. It's a little lengthy. Okay, so, it's for beer, wine, and cider, it's a temporary off-site permit. Whereas the liquor license of the Bronx Beer Hall, located at twenty-three forty-four Arthur Avenue, Bronx, New York, one oh four five eight, has exceeded the allowed for temporary beer, wine, and cider permits per calendar year to act off-site. And whereas, an oncoming Hypetoberfest event is to be held on Saturday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, on the grounds of the Van Cortlandt House we've seen in Van Cortlandt Park in Bronx, New York, from four PM to six PM. And whereas the Hypetoberfest event will be hosted by the Van Cortlandt Park Alliance, a five oh one C three nonprofit. And whereas, this is an annual fundraising event enjoyed by the community for the past eight years to raise funding for Van Cortlandt Park Alliance's educational stewardship and cultural programs. And whereas, the local New York City Police Department, Fiftieth Precinct, Commanding Officer Captain Ryan Pierce, supports the event, submitting a letter of support. The New York City Police Department, Fiftieth Precinct, stated they were unaware of any prior notable disturbances or complaints at this establishment, and supports the annual event and the vendors. And whereas, the chairpersons of the Parks and Recreation and Public Safety Committees co-signed a letter of support, along with the community board's chairperson prior to the board resolution. And whereas, an immediate full board vote was taken in support of the Hypetoberfest event hosted right at the Bronx Beer Hall, African New York State License Number, TP eight-two dash twenty-three dash zero eight two nine four, and Van Cortlandt Park Alliance, a five oh one C three nonprofit. Now, therefore be it resolved, Bronx Community Board A approves this application for beer, wine, and cider temporary off-site permit for your state license TP eight twenty-three zero eight two. That's it. Just two, two seconds. Okay, do we have any abstentions or anyone opposed to this resolution? That's it. Okay, so, that, that being stated, the Public Safety Committee, well, this is a resolution being brought from the floor also, it's for an SLA. And I'll read it, it's a very short one. It's a renewal application for the wine, beer, and cider. And whereas the liquor license of Palace of Japan, located at thirty-five oh five Johnson Avenue, was set to expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Public Safety Committee is scheduled to meet October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And the following full board meeting will not be scheduled to meet until November. And whereas representatives of the NYPD, Fiftieth Precinct, stated they were unaware of any prior notable disturbances or complaints at the location of this establishment. Now therefore be it resolved, Bronx Community Board A approves this application. You have any abstentions or any more? Oh, so, yeah, okay. So, we have any abstentions or anyone opposing this application? Okay, I, I, I want to say one more thing about, so first of all, Public Safety Meeting, next Tuesday, seven o'clock, seventeenth. We're going to have, again, the first, first, first legal cannabis application coming through the Office of Cannabis Management for us. We, I, I, I think I stood up here last month and said the exact same thing, but it was a false alarm because they threw the application for whatever reasons, but this one looks like it's going to definitely go through. We heard from one resident earlier in the gallery session, they were opposed to it. I, I would just say, you know, people from the community, this is your chance to come out and speak for or against whatever you feel about this business. This is for real, they're, they're going to be applying for a business, and they're going to be coming to our committee. So if anybody, people need to come out, this is your opportunity to speak about it. And you heard also Senator Rivera speak about this earlier, I'm not sure what his contact with this office about this matter, and that's all I got, thank you.
Thanks.
Don't you speak, Julia.
Kelly, can you unmute yourself, please? I'm actually Kelly, engineer, you're Walter.
I'm here, finally, thank you, I couldn't unmute. I will be very brief. The next TNT meeting is scheduled for October nineteenth. I also refer everyone to the TNT minutes, or you can review the YouTube recording. There was a matter presented at the TNT meeting regarding the, and I'm saying this in the interest of full disclosure, regarding the street renaming for Mr. James Pakis at the intersection of West two hundred and thirtieth street and Tibbett Avenue. We have asked for additional letters from the community, because we did not receive those, that. letters from the community because we did not receive those, that information. We also asked that the family be contacted to ensure that we have family buy-in on this, um, request to honor Mr. Pakis. And once we have that information, we will then present the resolutions to the full board for approval. I also note that Mr., uh, the guidelines stipulate that the dece, the, the honorary must be deceased at least two years from the date of approval. And Mr. Pakis passed in December of twenty twenty-one. So technically, this matter is not ripe for presentation. Therefore, we have enough time to get this information and bring it back to the full board for resolution and look forward to everyone's input at that time. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kelly. Who wants to hear it? Julia?
Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Um, for you to my minutes, my meeting's Monday at the board office. Come hang out with us. Have a good evening.
Herself. Julia.
We're hearing you, Julia.
She's finished her report.
Thank you, Julia. Okay, next is AJ. Austin.
I'll be very brief, uh, despite that, uh, yeah, Miami. And the first thing is the public figure is, um, the US Fund Committee on Thursday, twelve, from ten to twelve, well, ten A M. to twelve P M. At Bronx House, Riverdale Dog Center, or the Dog Center, nine ninety, Glen Park, the South, Bronx, New York, one oh one. And then our committee meeting is that same Thursday, twelve, at four P M. at.
Thank you, thank you, Austin. You going to budget? Say it again?
Yes. Um. Um, so, uh, as you know, we are in fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four. Starts July first, ends, uh, June thirtieth. And in preparation for the, um, uh, submissions to, um, O M B for our fiscal year twenty twenty-five, uh, budget priorities, uh, request. We, um, conducted a, uh, hearing earlier tonight before some of you, uh, showed up. Um, and, uh, took, uh, comments from the community about the budget priorities. And with that, I'd like to, um, present a resolution, uh, to the board, uh, for approval. And so from, um, from the budget committee on October tenth. Uh, whereas the operating committees of Bronx Community Board Eight met, discussed, and prioritized their respective fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital expense budget requests throughout the spring of twenty twenty-three. And whereas the budget committee met and reviewed all of the committee requests submitted, placing them into separate overall capital expense budget request lists on behalf of all Bronx Community, uh, Board Eight committees. And whereas the budget chair conducted a public hearing on October tenth, twenty twenty-three, offering community members the opportunity to comment on these prioritized, uh, budget requests. Now, therefore, be resolved that, uh, Bronx Community Board Eight approves the finalized fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital expense budget priorities. Want to present that, but actually, there was one modification, uh, that, I'm sorry, I should've said it before. One modification that came up, uh, last week. It turns out, um, the, um, city council approved, um, opening, um, libraries six days a week, which was one of, uh, the top priorities we had in our expense, uh, budget requests. Um, and so we'd like to drop that and substitute a, a relevant, uh, uh, coming up, I'm trying to find my copy. Um, a, uh, a very topical and timely, uh, um, substitute, uh, for that item, also coming from the education committee. My copy of it. What, opening? I'm sorry, we're just waiting for it to upload. Yeah, let me, let me, thank you. Thank you, Rosemary. Okay, so, uh, coming from, uh, the Education Libraries and Culture Affairs Committee. A proposal, uh, a, a budget request to enable local library branches to address the current asylum seeker crisis, including welcome kids to children and families during outreach events, in-person E S O L classes to help with immigration services and then, uh, improve the, um, immigrants' language skills and connect with the community. Normally, we don't really, um, take on changes, um, in, at, at the eleventh hour, but given the circumstances that, basically, this is something that hasn't been confronted, confronting, uh, New York City in a century. Uh, and it's quite timely. Um, I recommend that we, uh, enable the substitution for the, the, uh, number two expense priority of six days, um, library service because it's already been funded by, uh, city council. And I think that this would be an appropriate and timely, uh, substitution. And with that, um, I would, uh, move my resolution, uh, for the priorities that were distributed uh, uh, to the community, presented, um, on our website, uh, discussed, uh, by members of the community beforehand, uh, and before the meeting tonight at the hearing. And, um, I ask for, uh, a vote on this.
I'll second, I'll second it since it's basically something, a new resolution.
Okay, thank you. So, um, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry?
Alright, thank you, Sylvia. We'll go back to economic, Nick. Economic development. Right there.
They can hear me. Give me one second. Okay, the last meeting was on October seventh, okay? Bistro, for, for, one thing, the order management, the bistro's are hosting us. The committee is reviewing the eighteen proposed text amendments related to commercial manufacturing zoning and uses as part of the city of yes. Chuck and I will hopefully be meeting within the next, within the next couple of days. Our, our respective committees are reviewing those text amendments and will, will find a path forward to have a structural discussion on those. Whether that's a joint meeting or something else, we'll, we'll figure that out. Aaron and I will be meeting with D F S, and I think, I'm not sure, well, the Department of Financial Services for the state of New York. Uh, I think it's on Thursday, Thursday, uh, to discuss economic development and demographic trends here in the district. This is related to the banking development district designation, which we obtained in twenty twenty-one. This is part of their regular audit process whereby they determine if the subsidy is still needed. Of course, my presentation will suggest that it is definitely still needed. And then we have scheduled our first commercial board or walk-through on Friday, November third. We will visit businesses along Johnson Avenue and the Riverdale Avenue, uh, commercial board. And maybe invite the, uh, S B S, so Business Express Service team and the Bronx Economic Research Department. And, uh, any community board members are welcome.
Yeah, um, I have a question. Uh, I didn't realize that, uh, there was gonna be a recording of your last meeting. Um, could you give us forty-five seconds on what they, uh, told you about the, uh, Kingsbridge Armory?
Uh, that presentation was by the Northwest Bronx Community Coalition. I heard over their website, they have a, a, uh, vision plan. That vision plan isn't necessarily what's reflected in the R F P. There's some, there's some discrepancies, but there is something that they, that it was in the, in the R F P. I don't know exactly what they were offhand, but, uh, that, that presentation is, is on their website. It's finally, it's very interesting. Encourage everyone to take a look at it. Any questions? Good thing.
We will go to environment sanitation. I'll just make a note that they will be meeting next month for environment sanitation, since it's a late work in November fifteenth. You wanna unmute Bob? There's gonna be a lot of. We're gonna ask you to.
Bob, to unmute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so sorry not to be with you today. I'm observing a COVID quarantine. It happened again, so I hope you're all well. Um, like the chair mentioned, uh, E N S will be meeting next Wednesday. Agenda has been sent to the office. You should be getting it momentarily. And, uh, we'd particularly like to welcome new members to our committee, and we look forward to getting to know you. Um, as well as, we'd like to hear your experiences with flooding, um, from the storm of September twenty-ninth, which took everyone by surprise. So your input is really appreciated, and, uh, we anticipate a great, uh, next year of E N S. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next committee, health and hospital. To vice chair. Okay, the next one is housing.
As your committee will be Monday, October twenty-third, seven P M. at the board office. It'll be our initial meeting. I don't want to repeat with president and committee members to, sorry, look for it. The next special committee, yes?
I, you should say just that the health hospitals and sort of services meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, uh, seven, yeah, four o'clock.
The vice chair on to the greenway. Okay, thank you. Special committee on medical.
Um, we had a little tickle in, uh, the meeting plans since last week, so it will be rescheduled.
Maybe on medical services?
Evening, everyone. We are meeting on October thirtieth. Hopefully, I can speak social. I promise by tomorrow, we'll know. So we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm trying not to have it at the office, but it may end up at the office. November fifth is the, uh, is the Memorial Grove event. It's a Veterans Day event that happens every year. It's a very nice event. At noon, I invite all of our board members and the families to come out. It's a very, very nice event. It's at two forty-second. And then call the applause from, from, uh, Fergie. Same event. We have been invited to, to march as a community board at the veteran, at the Bronx Veterans Day period on November twelfth. If, uh, if we get the group together, I think we should do it. So if anyone's interested, come see me because our participation will end up on, if not just being one person. Thank you. Yes. Friggin', it's the one that, uh, is Shima. It starts, it starts at, it's Shima and I'll get at you. It's, yeah, it's, if you guys, yeah, that's that Veterans Day group. Yes, thank you.
And I would note that the, uh, Veterans, uh, Day event at the Memorial Grove, get to see our vice chair even spiffier looking than he is normally.
Sometimes I call you.
Okay, discussion on executive committee meetings, uh, September sixth, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone have any comments? Yes?
You answer about the minutes? I guess it's the minutes.
Are the executive committee meeting? Well, you are there, you weren't there, so. You weren't there, so.
No.
No? That told it, is that? Okay, so, check up the email, we'll re-mail it to you, so you're not, and it's just discussions. We're not voting on anything since the committee already voted in October for the exec. But, double check if you don't get it, well.
You remember the minutes of the October meeting?
No, no, September, September executive. Oh, wow, it's, okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay, so, no questions on the exec? So now we're going to go for the approval of the board minutes. First, I'm gonna do the approval of the board minutes for September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Everyone would see the document that. It was September twelfth. They use board minutes. No, no, I said September, September board. Yes?
It was just for reference to committee members absent, who, resident, I think it was for, sure, the board members. Since it's board meeting, not committee meeting, that's on the first.
Okay, the minute was a September twelfth. Okay, so we, we are. Any other directions?
I will say. Move the minutes up, correct it again.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Stephen. So, does anyone oppose for the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three minutes? Abstentions? That all the food. Abstentions, that all the groups give the correction. Okay, now we're going to do the July twenty, twenty twenty three special meeting. Everyone would see the minutes that we were going to go over last month. And the one correction that was needed at the time was the votes, how did the votes on the last page? That meeting. The members' names, that had been put on the minutes, they were not. Too many times, so. And we sent out, the board sent out an email to all the board members, and the new people you left there, so you know the changes in the spot. But the jobs who worked first at the meeting, if you have not responded to the email, you need to tell us now how you voted. Deb went to put a resolution. So? He made a motion to table Deb's resolution. It was seconded by Julia. And then eleven people in the room voted to table the resolution. And three people on Zoom, Chris, myself, and Lee Chum voted to table it. Five people opposed. So, does anyone here, who is at that meeting inside the office? Because we looked at the Zoom, and I'm not looking at it anymore. And we all looked at it, and you could figure it out fine. So right here, if you, if you approve Chuck's table in the motion, raise it in. All right, Sergio, and Nick. Chuck's in favor, Laura, you were in favor of tabling it? David, you gave us a chance, yes?
I, I, I'm fine with my.
You were opposed to that. No, I said, I said, some people, the people, the people know that they respond, they're answering. So Laura, they respond. Yes, Sylvia. Say, what was voted to approve the first one? To, to table it. To table. And David Gellman, you tabled it. And there will be some names on there, um, some people saying, but I'm not there, we're gonna have to live with it. And then opposed, we have Deb opposed not tabling the resolution. Anyone else opposed? What's been like?
Are you actually done with your vote?
Not yet. No, opposed. The next one. I know, that's why I said, it's gonna be what it is, and that's it. I was not in that meeting that morning. Okay, the second motion. Four. And then two to adjourn. The last one was a motion to adjourn. Those are July meetings. Okay, so, the motion to adjourn, the July meeting, uh, that one was a close one too. Deb, you opposed it to adjourn. I'll probably pop under, pop under, call it, I'll oppose. And Laura, you oppose. Did anyone else oppose to adjourn that meeting? Okay, so then whoever we could hear in that video, we will put in, and the rest of you. Everyone might have some that need. So, I moved to put in the minutes as is, and whoever opposes, I will give you this, and you can look at the video, and you can figure it out. So, anyone opposed the minutes? Amendment as is? Anyone abstained? And anyone approved to take it? Then.
I'll just adjourn.
Second? Thank you, everybody, for the meeting.
I like that, huh? Yeah, I like that. I thought you had a recent one. I tried to go and ask you. That's all, putting me to shame.
Right.
Is that all? Is it all?
Fuck with you, I couldn't rather.
Public safety committee members, come see it, please.
First, I'll leave it to Laura. That's a solid deal, everybody. Especially the chairs.
Well, I, I didn't, yeah, but I didn't know if there's a reason you weren't mentioning.
I'll mention it anyway.
Because we got found tonight, yeah. Like, we're caught in, uh, uh, dinner with, if the guy was, uh, if the video was. Yeah, yeah, and, and his name was, was Rudy, actually, Trump has, if there's, uh, if there's ministers who, yeah.
I have the email. It wasn't, it wasn't in my notes.
Oh, no, but I thought it was a recent.
No, we spoke with the priest and Sal, but they have to do an official report, and now we're asking him, is there, because we're in the office, where are you there? So, offices, Sal, that, that, because I said, there has to be a unit that was specialized in that. So, they're finding out who actually, okay, we're not gonna put the video, because then this way they'll just wanna keep doing it and put it on. I have to send out the emails.
Excuse me. Okay, yeah, so.
At your, at your meeting, for.
Oh, they, oh, she did.
I'll put it right next to it. Um, so that, at your meeting, at the meeting, you say, you select. You know, even though you select the vice chairman, the chair has a made whatever they feel wants. So that's a, from where, for all the various decisions, you think, they're all. Lots of, you select, you, you tell them that you, you select this.
Okay.
And then this was going to be in our.
I'll wait until I, I'll see how we.
Before the, before the meeting, thanks.
No, yeah, after. Something I would do.
The first year, she was, she had just got back from Europe.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But does she know?
If people don't use the mic, number one, can they hear?
So.
Yes.
And number two, desert record.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No, not this one, yours.
I see, but you, yeah, I just wanna make sure, like, forty percent of the meeting was.
So, if I have a point, because I'm a real person, if I don't have a point, I'm not the outstanding. I like, hey, I need some chocolate.
I honestly don't do it.
Put the chocolate with the cookies.
That's tricky.
Is that what it's for?
I used to work there.
Oh, really? But then when I was a kid, every Sunday, you had.
I think what everyone's gonna realize is that Zoom meetings, where they're all Zoom, are great, are perfect, that we have those all again. Hybrids?
I thought everybody liked that.
It is, regardless of EC, if you have a meeting where people are talking here and okay, but it's also most big for the person. That's like, that's just a hybrid.
I'll, I'll put you in this way. I was surprised that when Kira, when we were doing the way you're saying, Tanya and I and Kira would be recording, and all three administrators would.
You stopped the recording, by the way?
Yeah, would, you could see that it's recorded. Today, for some reason, our licenses disappeared from.
No, I told them.
No, 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 I took pictures of it.
License just resumed?
No, no, for example, you, you saw how we had one host?
Yeah.
The other two that had, um.
No, but the recording is there.
And record, you said, you said it's that, because it showed on there, it was. I'm sure you, but, um, it clearly took away the host access. Wow.
But what you don't know, which we didn't mention, is you, you would.
Okay, shit.
So, I'm, oh. But anyway, we got.
Oh, we had a total.
So we're.
Yes, so we.
We have.
We were hosted. I have to pass a mention. So.
I put it in the chat. Put it in the chat. It's not, I guess, I take it.
All right, how about, I don't wanna, you're, you're hacking hard, I guess, I mean, you're not. I looked at. You did not stop the.